Meeting to order, and please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, thank you all for joining us tonight, and thank you all for taking such an interest in public education. First up, we have Mr. Dirk Andrews introducing celebration for tonight. We have Mr. Matt Crabbe and Ms. Melody Lehman here to receive the Harriet Byrd Award. Actually, they've already received it. We're just recognizing them.
It's like I know how to do this thing. So my name's Dirk Andrews, and I have the privilege of being the president of the Natrona County Education Association, but I also have the privilege of serving on the Wyoming Education Association Executive Committee as the NEA Director. And each year, we provide awards for our members and non-members. We recognize people around the state. And so this last year, we had the privilege of nominating both Matthew Crabbe and Melody Lehman for the Harriet Liz Byrd Award. This award is one that recognizes multiculturalism in their buildings, the work they do. And so ultimately, Matt and Melody are advocates for everyone here in Natrona County. They stand up to discrimination and empower students and adults to be better. And so it's just kind of our honor to be able to recognize them. They've done some work around here, so we've brought some Leaders for Just Schools trainings, made sure that we've gotten that training for people. And what's cool is that is actually offered as a credit to our educators. And so it's always helpful to have a graduate credit for those. And then also, they've done some book studies. So they've done some amazing work, and so it's my honor and privilege to actually get to introduce those two tonight and recognize them for their work. Thank you.
Can we make them come to the front?
Yes.
We just want to take your pictures. Thank you for taking time out of your summer to join us tonight. We're very proud of you and look forward to the fantastic work you will continue to do. All right, and at this time, we will open the mic up to persons that wish to address the board. If you'd like to address the board, please come forward and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Reimer.
Good evening. My name's Dwayne Reimer. I live at 2012 Linda Vista. I've been a teacher here in the district for 25 years at Kelly Walsh that entire time. I want to remind the board that I sent you guys an email a couple days ago. I hope you got it. I hope that it kind of summarizes what my thinking was, and I encourage you to feel free to email me back if you have any more questions. I was on the design team for Kelly Walsh. I think I served on that for maybe more than six years. We kept a count of the meetings we went to, and I think I was up over 1,000 by the time we... So I don't... I think maybe Doug was at the most other than me, but I was there if we did it. And so I wanted to give you a little bit of... The reason I'm here is because of our parking expansion, and we're concerned that we at Kelly Walsh, and I don't, I haven't, you know, I don't elect myself a representative of the building, but I'm a person that was here, and I know, a person that was in the know, and a person that served on that for a lot of years. So if... Please feel free to ask around about who I am and what I did if you're not familiar with me. So I'll be quick. We did many, many traffic studies. We had a traffic flow professional designer that worked with us, and it comes down to this. Walsh is not getting bigger, nor is 12th Street unless we buy up a bunch of properties and do it like an old Beverly Street expansion where we knocked down a bunch of houses. Those choke points are not changing. And ultimately, what the traffic flow and the designer said is, "Look, you can poke a bunch of holes in your parking lot, but all you're doing is creating more intersections, which is where all the accidents happen." And so if car A, B, and C are lined up to leave your parking lot, and you put them all at the same one, and they all turn onto Walsh, let's poke three holes and put A, B, and C. They all turn onto Walsh. They're all still on the walls together. And actually, counterintuitively sometimes is, you've slowed it down because now you've created more access points where things, you have to stop and wait and look and listen. And as a former driver's ed teacher, I'm just telling you, teenagers are bad. So the... We don't feel like we have a traffic flow problem. It is what it is. It'd be nice if we could get out of there better, but Steve Hopkins and I, when the school first opened and sat upstairs and watched traffic leave on more than one occasion, I think I've probably done it three or four times a year in the seven years we've been open because I'm strange. And by the time we released at 3:24, the parking lot is empty of 3:24 releasers by about 3:45, which means that there's always people there that are hanging out at their school, whatever. But the people that are trying to leave within 20 minutes have left. That's not bad for 2,200 adults and kids. And I know people say, "Well, I waited an hour." Well, if you show up 30 minutes early to get a good spot in line, yeah, you might wait an hour. But, you know, I've always wished people would say, "Look, I'm going to park up on Kingsbury. Why don't you walk a block? You've got good legs. You're young." And let's... You know, as a parent, I wouldn't come on campus, but that's just me. So I just... I'm really concerned that we're going to miss out on our parking trying to fix a flow problem that's not a problem. So the other part of that, and I'm out of time, is the late date. We have a local contractor in Ram's Horn that's homegrown people that... And I spoke to him last week. He's like, "I didn't bid other work for this summer because I had set aside this for this project." And he's an asphalt guy. Asphalt's not something we do year-round. And so we've put him in a spot where we're compromising his company because he was planning on doing the work. Like I said, please read my email. Please, please ask if you have questions. A lot of work was done around the design of our traffic flow, and it kind of is what it is. There's stuff there you can't push on. Thanks. Appreciate your time.
Dwayne, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you do a traffic flow that included 160 new spaces?
No, but the...
I want to see that traffic flow before we put 160 new spaces in.
But you're not going to change what Walsh or 12th looks like if you put two spaces or 100 spaces. Walsh and 12th still don't change.
Now, what I'm trying to do will change it a little bit.
We don't typically get into discussions during public comment.
Sure. Like, you mean after the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh. I'm actually supposed to be somewhere 45 minutes ago that I put off.
Come to the meetings when we're...
I'd be happy to. I've been uninvited from those since I... For quite some time, so...
Yes, we can figure out a time that we can talk with Mr. Reimer.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Abby Gruner, and I'm a 2021 graduate of Natrona County High School. I'm here to bring to your attention some issues stemming with the class rank system that is currently in place at Natrona County High School. One of the main issues is that there's a complete lack of transparency with this system. We actually never find out our weighted GPAs that go into the overall class ranking. We never see the calculations for how these weighted GPAs are calculated, and this can lead to a lot of frustrations for parents and students as well. And we also don't get to even have access to our class rank until the start of our senior year, and then they don't calculate it again until right before graduation. And this can lead to a lot of errors that oftentimes do not get fixed. For example, in 2021, there ended up having to be 10 valedictorians announced at our graduation ceremony due to some errors in the calculation that hadn't been caught previous to announcing the original four valedictorians at our senior awards ceremony. And to me, the solution to these two major issues with the transparency is to have it required that after each semester, each student has access to an in-depth calculation of their weighted GPAs that give them some indication of how their class rank was reached. And my other issue is that it's extremely hard for students in extracurriculars that happen during the class day to become valedictorian, because right now, pretty much the only way to get this title is to be full IB. And due to schedule complications, this is often not possible for students involved in, say, music, band, art, any of those classes that take place during the day. There are just too many schedule complications that it's not possible. And to me, the solution for this is there to be an alternate path. And a good path would be for BOSI's classes to count as the same weighting as the IB classes that are taken during the day. It will give more flexibility and more... It will give an alternate path to students who are unable to take full IB. And right now, there is somewhat of a system in place, but again, it's lacking a lot of transparency, and students do not have access to an in-depth list or catalog of what these classes are going to be weighted for all of the BOSI's classes available to them. So a lot of the time, it's a complete surprise what their weightings are going to be for these classes. And again, we never actually know because we don't get to see the in-depth calculations for our weighted GPAs. And so while I graduated two years ago, this is still an issue, as you're going to hear from two other students coming up. And so I would really just love if you would take the time to consider some changes you could make to make this better for future students.
Thank you, Ms. Gruner.
Hi, my name is Paige Gaither. I graduated the spring of 2022. Following the issues that we had with the 10 valedictorians, I was told at the beginning of my fall semester senior year that we were going to make some changes to how valedictorian was run and put in place. At the beginning of my senior year, there was no specific rules or regulations as to what the administration had in place for what valedictorian meant. Some people said that it was the top 1%. Some people said it was the number one, that we would have valedictorian versus salutatorian, and so on and so forth. Somewhere in the middle of my fall semester, I was pulled out of class by the administration and discussed what my ranking was. At this point, the ranking was on the website, Infinite Campus. I was told at this point that my ranking was number two, and that if I continued on my path of full IB and everything that I'd done thus far and got As, I would be a valedictorian. I was disheartened to discover that on senior award night, I was not a valedictorian, and furthermore, that we were having now valedictorian and salutatorian. At the beginning of the semester, I was told that if any changes were to be made to valedictorian or how the process was run, that all students who had been pulled out of class prior would be included in the discussion and would be told what was going to happen. After this, I had a conversation with the administration about what could be done to rectify the situation as I was told and was hoping to become a valedictorian. The issues that we found was that the Infinite Campus ranking that the administration told me that I had was calculated differently than how the school district did it throughout the senior semesters. This caused not only the administration within NC to have a different ranking for each student, but it caused confusion as to how the rankings were put together. Furthermore, I was a full IB student and a BOSI student, and my BOSI's were never told to me or discussed how any of that affected my weighted GPA. Some classes were weighted, some classes were not. It was never really told to me which ones counted and which ones didn't. I didn't know how this was going to affect my overall weighted GPA. There was a lack of just, I guess, communication overall, as we discussed. Furthermore, we decided that there would not be multiple valedictorians my senior year as a result of the 10 valedictorians prior. However, the salutatorian was also given the title valedictorian, so we did in fact have two valedictorians, but the other students promised valedictorian were not given this title. While I understand that changes were made and there was a miscommunication, I felt that by being told at the beginning of the year, becoming valedictorian, I was looking forward to a promise that was not only not met, but miscommunicated. And so I hope that we can make some changes and have just a more open communication in the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gaither.
Hi, my name is Tamsin Gorman, and I graduated from Natrona County High School this June, and I have a lot to say. My experience with NC's administration and with the school district's interest in fairly resolving an issue has really been disappointing. At the conclusion of my junior year, I was informed by my counselor that my class rank was officially first. You can imagine my shock and dismay when I came out of a counselor meeting in October, mere weeks before my college applications were due, having been told my class rank was suddenly fourth. My mom contacted the registrar to see where the disconnect might be, as my GPA did not match what we had calculated by hand. We were gassed to realize that several of the classes we had been told were advanced or honors weight were being assigned regular weight for class rank calculation purposes. Fortunately, we had emails verifying the weight of some of these classes, and so my class rank was quickly adjusted to tied for third. However, upon meeting with a school counselor, two glaring issues jumped out at us. First, a science class that I had been advised by the principal at the time to take because it would have been honors weight had been weighted regular weight. Second, and even more troubling, the music independent study class that I had gained permission to take my freshman year, and I had taken my sophomore year as well, was listed on my transcript my freshman year as music theory. And while I'd been in the same class with the same assignments and expectations as juniors and seniors, we discovered that my sophomore year independent study was weighted a full point less than my peers in the same class. I received regular weight for the class both years, and they received honors weight. We first approached Mr. Wilson about these issues. Unfortunately, his position was that it would not be fair to correct something that occurred before he arrived. With time running out before my college applications were due, we ultimately raised these issues as well as numerous other anomalies with Mr. Wilcox. Strangely, there was zero interest in correcting my freshman year transcript to reflect the music independent study course that I actually took. My applications for college and scholarships ended up being submitted with my class rank listed as third, and I firmly believe that the failure to correct or even address this issue adversely affected my getting scholarships. We requested that Natrona name the top 1% of this year's class valedictorians, as they have done many times in the past and as recently as two years ago. I was very surprised when they opted for just the top two, particularly given the administration's awareness of all these anomalies that had yet to be addressed. It was also very frustrating that one of the students named ahead of me was not on the top honor roll the first semester. Lots of students make being in the top of their class a priority when they enter high school, and it's only fair that the administration honor these efforts by correctly calculating class rank for the top of the class. In short, the calculation and presentation of class rank needs to be made transparent, accurate, and uniform for all students. Additionally, music independent study should be weighted in a uniform manner, as weighting based on grade level alone is arbitrary and unfair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman.
Hi, my name is Anna Hibbert. My address is 7718 Forum in Evansville, 82636. I have two children that attend Natrona County School District. One goes to Casper Classical Academy, and the other one goes to Evansville Elementary School. My children love their teachers and the friends that they've made at their schools, and so do I. I just want to... I love them. They've been so good for my kids since we moved back. And I care a great deal about our community as I have grown up here, and my greatest friends and most of my family still live here. I also work for Mercer Family Resource Center as the family and parenting specialist, and I'm also part of the Natrona County Prevention Coalition and chair the Family and Parenting Subcommittee that organizes and plans substance-free, family-friendly events. So with the help of the Youth Empowerment Council, I sent all of you guys an invitation, paper one, and the Youth Empowerment Council, they helped write the little notes that we had in those invitations. And I also emailed one to you. And now I'm here in person just inviting you to the two-day workshop called "The Strengthening Families Protective Factors." This training came to us through a partnership with the Governor's Council on Mental Health, the Wyoming Children's Trust Fund Alliance, and the Align Team. I have invited all legislators that are in Natrona County. I also invited city council members from Casper, Evansville, and Mills, as well as parents and caregivers from across Natrona County. This will be a relaxed and informal setting where participants will be encouraged to share their thoughts and experiences through interactions, activities, and small group discussions. We hope to accomplish... What we hope to accomplish is to provide all of our community with a framework to set a strong foundation where all the decisions that you make can either can fit into one of the five protective factors. We want to build a stronger community for our families and support them. So we divided it up. The training, it's a six-hour training originally, and we divided it up into two days, and we have a week in between, so you guys have an opportunity to, like, observe the community in a new way or different, and come back with your observations, and we can talk about it. So the only thing you need to do to register is scan the QR code that's on the front of the card, and then in the email, there's a link to that you can click on, and it goes to a Google form, and that's the registration process. So I would love to see you all there if you can come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hibbert.
Do I wait till the time's out?
No, no, you're good to go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Justine Martin. I'm with Mercer Family Resource Center, 535 West Yellowstone. I run the Youth Empowerment Council at Mercer. It's a youth-run organization that aims to better the community, support youth, grow, and lead by example. YEC has been involved in a number of different things this year. I sent you guys an email request for funding. Also, we dropped it here, so you guys should be getting that. But YEC, they've done some really amazing things this last year, as I'm sure you guys read. We've done a lot of pro-social, substance-free events for teens in the community. We had a YEC hashtag Y Amplify dance on Valentine's Day. That was really successful. Also, they do SPAT presentations, and that's kind of why I'm here tonight, is to chat with you guys about those. That's a suicide prevention awareness team. We, you know, there are a lot of schools that were willing to have us to talk about suicide prevention in Natrona County. We've done the entire freshman class of NC the last two years, and that's been great, and our feedback's been really impressive. 98% of youth know where to get someone help if they are thinking about suicide, based on our presentations and those that we've talked to. 92% of students believe that a person thinking about suicide wants help, and 92% of students feel more informed about teen suicide after the SPAT presentation. Wyoming is ranked number one per capita nationally, so it's high. It's not something we're proud of. Natrona County exceeded the number of suicides the last year. And so it is a life-saving presentation that YEC puts on for our youth. And while some schools have been really excited to have us come present, some schools have not. And so we could certainly use the school board's support in doing that this coming year, because it is something that kids really value and want to hear about. It's evidence-based, and the feedback that we got from teens is really powerful, and I think it speaks to that. So it's peer-to-peer, and if you guys have any questions, definitely reach out. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Hi, my name is Megan Gorman. I was encouraged to be here because I have the dubious honor of being a parent of the most recent class from Natrona County High School with questions about class rank, and I'm here to encourage you to look into these things. My daughter, Tamsin, spoke a moment ago, so she talked about her music independent study class. We could sit down and have a whole lunch over the things that we've been trying to address this year, but obviously, for brevity, I'll try to skip over a lot of this. My daughter alluded to the fact that Mr. Wilson didn't feel it was fair for him to correct something that had happened before he had arrived at Natrona. And so in the fall, I did reach out to the district. I spoke with Mr. Wilcox in an attempt to remedy the issues. We had five or six different issues. A few of them were remedied. Two very large ones were not at that time. And so my daughter's applications for college and scholarships still did end up being submitted with her class rank listed as third, and we do firmly believe that made a difference. In early May of this year, I contacted Walt again, basically asking for three things. I think, I'm trying to remember. I don't think I copied you on that one, Superintendent Jennings. I think I copied you later. The three things I was asking for were that my daughter's transcript be corrected to show that she took music independent study her freshman year, which she had. It was incorrect. I asked that her transcript receive, or her music independent study class receive the same weight that her classmates received for the same class. And I also asked that, in light of the serious discrepancies adversely affecting her class rank, that Natrona go ahead and award the top 1% valedictorian, as they had so often in the past. You've heard that it's been back and forth. And we very, very strongly felt that there were serious anomalies. The response I received from Walt at that time indicated that they did agree to change the title of my daughter's course on her transcript, but were still awarding it regular weight, even though the actual music independent study class at regular weight was not created until the following year. Natrona obviously did not choose to award the top 1% the title of valedictorian. I will send you additional information on this. I meant to send it today. I was busy. I actually had a conversation with another parent who's not represented here tonight, who said that she had to put her child in therapy. And I mean, that sounds extreme, but because she went into her senior year being told she was top in her class and then was told she was 10th. And the truth is, a lot of children do, a lot of students do aim to be top in their class, and it's a reasonable goal, and we should encourage that. And so we should support them. And so I'm basically asking that you guys consider and really pursue four primary things. First off, transparency in class rank. Class rank should be correctly calculated at the conclusion of each school year and made available to students. There should be clear understanding of how a non-A grade will affect a class rank. There should be transparency and consistency in class weighting. It should be an easily accessible and available document that lets parents see what classes are weighted. There shouldn't be smoke and mirrors. And then I'm requesting that music independent study specifically should be examined for the future for actual differences in rigor and requirement for the general and honors weights distinction. It's the same class. The kids are doing the same thing. Some get a four for it, some get a five for it. To have our request deliberately slow-walked or purposely misunderstood is not helpful, and I think we would all say that we want to support our kids in trying to pursue the best goals that they can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Gorman. All right. If anyone else would like to address the board, please come forward and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. All right, we will move on. Without objection, the minutes of the general session of May 8th, 2023 will be approved. Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Without objection, the minutes of the executive session of May 8th, 2023 will be approved. Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Consent agenda items. Superintendent Jennings.
Chair, Cavalier, trustees, there are five items on your consent agenda this evening for your consideration. Certified and classified personnel report, district bills dated May 5th, 2023, May 12th, 2023, May 19th, 2023, and June 2nd, 2023. There are three bids around food services. There are three contracts, also for NIQ Fast Bridge, and ASCD PD Online for staff, and there's one donation for NCHS Girls Wrestling.
Thank you, Superintendent Jennings. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items. By trustee Walsh, seconded. Do you have a second?
Can we vote on these separately, like the certified, like the one, two, and three? One, I'm sorry.
Right now, we have a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. What were you going to say?
We need a second. We have a motion and a second. Now further discussion.
Okay. Got it. Now I can speak. Yeah, I just would like to make the motion to, that we would go through them separately, the one, the two, the three, the four, and the five separately.
All right, so...
You're not already going to do that.
We have competing motions, so...
I don't want to vote on them in a lump sum.
Do you want to pull something in particular out of the consent agenda?
I just want to... I have concern about the contracts, so I just don't want that to be pulled in as a lump sum to vote for all of this.
All right, so...
Might make myself clear.
It sounds like you're trying to remove the contracts from the consent agenda item. Is that correct?
No, I just wanted to have the chance to vote not in favor of the contracts.
I think your mechanism then would be to vote no on the consent agenda. Or, I mean...
If it's all put together in one lump sum, then that's what I would have to do, yes.
Okay. Unless you want to make a motion to remove... Unless, unless you want to make a motion to remove the contracts from the consent agenda, and then we'd get a second.
I'd make that motion to remove that, that one line item and consider it separately.
So we have a, we have a first motion. And that's.
Can I, so, may I have a question of the lawyer?
We have to get these motions in order, so I have to keep track of the motion. So first, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items that's been seconded. So if there is an additional motion on the floor, we just need to be very clear about what that is.
So the motion, the second motion, would be to separate or the contracts from?
So he already made that motion, so is there a second?
I believe he's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's what we're saying, is that, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
But it's not a motion by itself.
It's a subsequent motion.
So we have a motion on the floor with a second to take the contracts out of the consent agenda item. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion to remove the contracts from the consent agenda items, signify with a show of hands. Any opposed? Same sign? That motion does not pass. So now we have further discussion on the original motion of approval of the consent agenda items. Thank you, trustee Stidelli. And trustee Hopkins, if you have something you want to say about the contract now, it would be also appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
Give me one moment.
I'll give you a moment, and I'll ask for other discussion.
Thank you.
Any other, any other discussion on the consent agenda items?
You know, I, we can just go ahead and move on.
Okay.
The discussion.
All righty. And all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda items, please signify with a show of hands. Any opposed? Same sign? The motion is approved. Onto reports and recommendations. Have our Board Infrastructure Planning Committee, major maintenance recommendation to the board, and it is a number of projects that we plan to take care of in the coming months. Any questions? I guess I will make a motion that we approve the major maintenance project recommendations for 2022, 2023. Seconded in by trustee Walsh. Any further discussion on the major maintenance projects or the recommendation as a whole? It's, all those in favor of the motion to approve the, lost it. To approve the major maintenance project recommendations for 2022, 2023, please signify with a show of hands. Any opposed? Same sign? The motion is approved. Onto other business. Trustee Myler, we'll start with you tonight. Trustee Alvy. Trustee Christopherson. Trustee Hopkins.
You, Chairman Catalier. Okay, so I just wanted to, can you hear me okay? Okay. I just wanted to talk, just a comment on the valedictorians, or lack of, or not receiving what was due. I, I'm not sure if they're still in the audience, but I think it's really disappointing to tell children that they're going to receive something and to be with no communication to be disappointed or to find out on your own that that may not be the case. I agree with the students that have come and their parents that something needs to be done about this. It's kind of a messy situation. You got IB classes, you got advanced classes, you got honors classes, you got what's going on at the PIC, you got the college, you got the BOSI. I mean, all this stuff, it seems to be just kind of a mess. I, I know I'm, I'm coming into this a little late, and I'm sure there's, might be something going on already to fix the problem, but I would hope that this is important enough to be, to pay attention to, and hopefully that the children are not disappointed again when they work so hard for something and just be told that it's not going to be happen. Let's see here. I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. Trustee Howie.
I'd like to express my appreciation for the 211 presentation. I thought that was really interesting, and I had no idea it was around, and I think it could help a lot of people. I'd also like to congratulate Melody and Matthew for their awards. I know them both, and they're both excellent people, and Matt was even one of my former students, so that's really nice. I, I wanted to say that I enjoyed attending all four graduations and handing out diplomas. The celebrations were great, and it was good to be reminded of the successes of our students in our schools. But as always, there's going to be work to do to keep improving student experiences. So we won't be having committee meetings during the summer, but in the fall, we are starting to review our strategic goals, and I'm really anxious to get going on that and look at what we've accomplished and what we need to go back and keep working on, and I think maybe that will fit right in with what the questions were about the valedictorian situation. So hopefully, we can do that. I know we're going to have a lot of work to do, but I'm really excited to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Howie. Trustee Stidelli. Thank you, trustee Stidelli. Trustee Walsh. All right. Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming again. Thank you for Melody and Matthew. That is an excellent award, and thanks for all the work that you do. And thank you for the students and parents that came up and brought to light an issue that many of us don't know about, so I'm interested to learn more about it. And just thank you to all the, all the staff that makes this possible. Superintendent Jennings, the mic is yours.
Chair Catalier trustees, celebrate all of our students who started their summer vacation today, with the exception of one school, which is still doing a couple of makeups to get the, to get the school year in. And thank you to all of our staff for the hard work that they did this year. Congratulations to Matt and Melody as far as the award from WEA. Whenever we're talking about graduation and valedictorians and salutatorians, it is truly students working diligently and working toward a goal over the course of their four years. The process or the weighting rank system is, is very sophisticated and laid out and communicated forward, and there is always, there is always a process in doing that. And it's a well-laid-out process that has been revised over the years to make sure it's transparent, it's clear, and when there's disagreement, there's processes on how you would disagree. That absolutely can be a topic in our Board Academic Steering Committee. Trustee Howie, as far as what that currently looks like today, but I know the administration in all of our high schools and here at the central office take it very serious, because it does matter. It's important. And so we will continue to refine and make that better, because we want to serve the students well in our district. Your next meeting is July 17th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in this facility.
Thank you, Superintendent Jennings. This meeting is.